... invocation by Pastor Greg Gilberto.
I do apologize for being late.
Oh.
Traffic is crazy because the city's growing at such an incredible rate. It's a good way to start a prayer. Lord, I really believe that, Father, we're right here at a crossroads in our city. I was reading today, "Lord, blessed are the peacemakers." Help us to be peacemakers. Within my own family, there's opposition and there's polarization, and, Lord, I like it, don't like the way it feels. And in this room, there are good people all around us, good council members. They represent our city. I pray blessings on them, an anointing of your Holy Spirit, Lord. You said, "When the Spirit of God comes, there'll be unity," and I pray for unity, a healing across the board. Thank you, Lord, for the new election and the new folks taking positions. Now, Lord, I pray that you'd give them divine wisdom that they don't even have on their own, that, Father, they're going to find places in their hearts that they've never dreamed possible, that this is going to be a good day. This is the start of a good day. We're asking, Lord, that you would bless us and be with us. Every decision, make it be filtered through your sovereignty or goodness, your mercy and your grace. Everything that's been said and done in the past is over, it's done, and even the articles in the paper, Lord, I pray that we'd be, that we'd, I call cease to that, and I pray peace. Peace. May peace fall in this place. We love you, Father, and we thank you that it's a good place to live. Thank you for popular bluff. Thank you for everything that's going on. Thank you for the, and I was kidding around, but really I wasn't, it's amazing how much is going around, just every day, it's something new, it's an adventure. But, Lord, now we have, we have to have more divine direction, more now than ever before, I pray that, believe it. Lord, be at this meeting tonight. Everything be said and done for the glory of your name, and in Jesus' name, we pray these things, and believe you've heard everything we've asked. And everyone here said?
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Gilberto, that was beautiful. Roll call. Councilman DeGerris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Here.
Councilman Branham. Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson. Here. He sits present. Councilman Branham contacted me today. He will be about 30 minutes late due to work issues. Disclosure of interest. Any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous I have a conflict on workshop item F. My husband works for the firm that's doing that work, so I'm just going to step out during Any other? Saying done? Moving forward. Citizens input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Got a couple. Whoever wants to go first, just make sure you state your name and address.
My name's Alvy Bachman. I live, my name's Alvy Bachman. I live at 1503 County Road 569, which is out of town, but also I'm the quartermaster of post 6477 Veterans of Foreign War. We at one time ran out of money to operate our canteen because it doesn't make money. We have to pay for it out of the general fund, what is, what is not enough to pay. Well, we ran out of money, so we sold the canteen, and therefore the city canceled our liquor license. What we wanted to do, and that is a conditional use report, move it up to 415 South Broadway. That's up in the big building, about 100 feet where we had the canteen before. And the reason why I say conditional use, if we ever decide to move from there, then it can go back to the rezoning structure that the city has for not allowing any alcohol whatsoever in that zone. So I would appreciate it if the city council could take this up at some time or another, and I sure would appreciate it, and the VFW would appreciate it, too. What we need, and not that we all drink that much, but there's a lot of soldiers and stuff coming back from the war that love to get into a spot where they can talk and communicate with each other. There is nothing more than having comradeship amongst the soldiers, especially the ones returning. Some of them come back quite messed up, and the only person that can understand them is another individual that had been put into the same war zone type possibilities there. But that's all I got. If anybody's got any questions, me, I would appreciate answering them if I can.
I think that would be strictly for members. It wouldn't be an open bar for the public, would it?
Even the canteen over there was not an open bar. If it was an open bar, we would have probably been able to make enough profit to keep it going. But it's just for members only, and the members only have keys to the place, and if they bring their wives in, they sign their wives into the place over there, so somebody off the street would not be able to come in there and be served.
Does anyone have any other questions? We'll take this under consideration. Mr. Bachman, thank you.
Okay, I sure appreciate that, and the VFW appreciates that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council and Mayor Pearson, my name is Dan Kaufman, and I live at 213 Kaylee Circle.
Okay.
I have to say, it's a privilege to live in the great city of Popper Bluff, and I have, as many of you have, been reading a lot lately, and so I'm just here to find out myself, a few comments, a few questions. I'd just like to know, I've heard a lot about this new direction, and I'd like to know a little bit about it. I'd like to start with a few questions, and by the way, I have no business in the form of disclosure. I currently have no business before the city council or the city of Popper Bluff. We all, and you heard the minister say earlier how proud we are of this city, and we all want to look to the future. I would like to spend at least one minute going back, though, what has happened for the last two administrations, I guess. The city's had some unprecedented growth, and I think it stems back to the 57 miles of the four-lane highway, when we really got our start. Few other things, Oak Grove Road, Shelby Road, Phase One and Two, the industrial park bypass, the new healthcare facility that we have out there that we should all be proud of. We have many others. Even local businessmen have invested in this town because they believe in it. We've had a new bank move to town. That certainly shows confidence in the economy in Popper Bluff. Just to name a few others, Walgreens, CVS, Benards, and I hear there's many others that's going to be announced. So, a couple of things that's bothered me in the past week or so. I would just like to ask, maybe individually, this deal with the contracts that a lot of the employees have, as well as people who contract with the city. Are we going to be known as a city that meets its commitments and honors its contracts? Mr. DeGerris?
Yes, I think we should.
Mr. Brown's not here. Mr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Russian?
The phone within the law.
Mayor Pearson?
What Mayor Pro Tim Russian said, it's within the law.
The second thing that really kind of bothered me was these admitted private meetings that were structured to skirt the sunshine law are a little disturbing. Each of you took a pledge and an oath to act in the best interest of the city, to uphold the Constitution, to honor the laws of the state of Missouri and the city of Popper Bluff and its ordinances. I don't know how you guys are going to work together if you all don't know what's going on. I understand that there was at least two city council people that were unaware that there was meetings happen, and then after those meetings, you came to the next meeting, and an action took place. Now, I'm not going to get into the legal part of that, that's for someone else to do, but I do have one question again for you. Do you think it was ethical to have those meetings?
Mr. Kaufman, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Those quotes that you're referring to were taken out of context. They did not occur, and it is false information.
Okay, I understand. I said, "It's only what I read."
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If I may, there was never a designated meeting set up at all for the discussion of the termination of city management. There was consensus that developed through the election process that went on prior to the election and carried over after the election. You know, the people that supported and voted for us, some of them had a vision for how the city should be, and the people that supported our opposition had a vision of how they thought the city should be. And on many occasions, you know, at large positions, Dave and myself, went over a lot of popper bluff, we did as much foot traffic as we could through the neighborhoods, and, you know, we heard comments that, you know, to go to the next level for the city, you know, they wanted to have like a professional city manager, someone with some college education and municipal functions, municipal activities and stuff like that. So the consensus was there before the election, and then stepping for the change is the direction we took.
I understand. Any of those statements I make will be solely because of something I've read.
Right.
Okay, or observed myself.
I understand.
So it'll entirely be on me.
That's why I wanted to enlighten you, because there's been a lot of false things said, and...
Like I said, I leave that to someone else. But my question is, the meetings happened, am I correct in that?
No.
No.
Because, again, well, again, the meeting after the election that we had, we reviewed history of the city and the city government. Then there was a meeting called by Doug himself, in which the three of us were there, and so there was never an organized meeting called after we're sworn in for discussion of termination. Mr. Bagby?
Thank you. I'll revise my question a little bit then. Would you think it would be ethical to have meetings that were less than the quorum and then, and not enlighten other members of the council previous to go into a meeting? Mr. DeGerris?
No.
No.
I'm sorry. Mr. Russian?
Yes, I agree. No?
Mr. Johnson?
No.
No.
Mayor?
I'm going to say no, but having been on the side of the fence, where I've been the person left out of the mix, I've been the person that hasn't been notified of things going on. There's more to the story sometimes than what people understand, but no, I don't think it is.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you. So, okay, now, this is another quote, and I'm almost finished, really, I just had like two or three...
You're fine. You're fine.
Okay. Mayor Pearson, you were quoted as saying that no other personnel will be fired. Did you make that quote?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. How do you know?
From my, from my perspective, I don't perceive anyone to be, that's going to be fired. I don't know about other council members, I'm just speaking for myself.
Can I answer?
Absolutely.
In discussion on more than one occasion with Mark there, we made it clear that he was not going to be in the position of having to fire other department heads, and we fully understand, and when I, when I meet with a selection group, we fully understand that department heads and immediate subordinates have all come up from the community. We know that most of them are lifelong Popper Bluff residents. We don't want any of them to lose their jobs, but when the new city manager comes in, we hope that they tweak things and get more efficiency out of the city departments, both cost effectiveness and efficiency of effort, and the only reason why the new city manager should ever terminate anybody is if he finds that they're totally inept, and that'll be his decision.
Okay, so, I think I, I think I, just one more question, and then I have to say, we have a great city here, guys, and, and I think we are on a roll, we want to keep it moving that way, but our last question is, my last question, I guess it's to you, Mayor Pearson, because it's been quoted a lot, is that we're going to take a new direction. Could you give me a couple of examples of what that new direction is?
A new direction means including everyone. In the past, there's not necessarily, that's not happened. There are people that have felt left out, there are people who have felt pushed aside, there are neighborhoods that felt neglected. Those people are now included. The new direction is including everyone, including people that don't agree with us, including people that support us. The new direction is moving forward together. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Any questions of me?
Thanks for coming up. I know that that's nerve-wracking.
What's that?
It's a little nerve-wracking coming up, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Thank you for your participation.
I appreciate, yes, as you know, I'm not a public figure, so, or as most of you would know.
Thank you for addressing us respectfully.
Sure.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
As I said, I did so for myself, and I appreciate your time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? The items on the consent agenda are approved by single action of the city council. If any council member would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and considered separately, he or she may so request. Approval of the minutes. The city clerk will present the minutes of the city council meetings held on April 7th. I think everyone has this in their packet. Did anyone want to separate anything from the minutes or the city clerk's report? If not, can I...
Not a mayor, but there's nothing to be addressed separately. I'd entertain a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Workshop items. The city council will discuss a temporary policy for purchase orders.
Yes, I'll address that. When I was appointed interim city manager, since I'm also finance director, auditors thought that I shouldn't be signing purchase orders over $500 and over, which is what the city manager does. I talked to our CPA, and she suggested that we, and all we need is consensus. I talked to Wally, said we didn't need an ordinance or resolution to designate city planner Dennis Avery to sign those purchase orders, anything $500 and over.
So we just needed a consensus?
I agree.
I agree.
I do, too. You have a consensus? So I guess you can go ahead and do that, then.
Okay, thank you.
Item B, the city council will discuss the appointment of an advisory search committee to fill the city manager's position. I guess I will address this. We have a vacancy for the city manager, and there are some pretty good leaders in the community who I felt would be very good to appoint to a committee that we could use to, to find a new city manager, somebody that is maybe educated, very knowledgeable about city business, someone who could move us even further than we ever expected. So, maybe some of you have read about it in the paper, I've kind of put together a list of people who I feel are very capable, and I would hope that the council would approve, prove me to be able to appoint those individuals. The individuals that I'm thinking of would include the two at-large councilmen, since they represent the entire city. Steve Halter, who is the president of the Chamber of Commerce, Devon Stevenson, who is the president of Three Rivers College, Chris Hahn, who is the superintendent of R1 Schools, Mr. Marty Michaels, who owns Key Drugs, Ken McFay, who has a lot of investment property in Popper Bluff. I feel like I'm missing someone. Jim Bailey, how could I forget Jim Bailey, who has been just an amazing source of growth in our community, what he's done. I've also talked to a few of the city employees to represent basically all the city employees, because maybe they need to have a say in who's going to be their new, the person there for them. Contacted David Sutton, he's back there, from the police department, Sandy Walker from the utilities department, and Mr. Larry Stonecypher from the fire department, and I think these, these three employees could maybe go to the other departments and see, you know, coordinate with them, the ones that aren't necessarily represented. We don't want to get the group too large, but just hope you all would approve that so we can move forward with the search. Nationwide search.
I just had one question. We've got Councilwoman Abshir sitting beside me that's got more experience dealing with the city government on the council level and worked with several city managers that I think would be a good ask. I mean, she's got more experience than all of us put together, sitting on the council.
Ms. Abshir, are you interested in being on the board, too?
That'd be good. I agree.
I agree.
I agree, too.
Good point, Ed.
Working together. If everyone's okay, can we go ahead and get a motion?
I'd make a motion to make a search committee out of this.
Well, you have to make a motion to send it to the voting session.
Okay. We'll send it to the voting session.
I'll second.
The forum committee.
I'll second. I'll second that.
All right, so a motion and a second to send it to the action required items tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The city council will discuss establishing a policy to upload council meeting videos when available to the city's website. Been speaking with city clerk Pam Kirby, and she has helped me come up with an idea for getting the city council meeting videos online, and I've been working on this for almost a year now, and I'm pretty sure we've come up with a way to make it to where we can put it online at very low cost or no cost to the city, and this would make it more convenient for the citizens to be able to watch it whenever they, whenever they would, you know, have the time to do so. It would bring about the transparency that we're all wanting to see, and I, I think it would be good to just go ahead and establish a policy that would allow one of the individuals from the city to place our council meeting videos online for citizens.
On the website.
On the website, on YouTube, and then on the website. It's just going to be a, I just need a resolate, just a resolution to...
I know several of the churches in the community, they, they stream their services live. I don't know what, you know, we have it on the TV, but if you could stream it live, somebody could put you on their, wherever they're at.
Well, they have it on cable, and that's, you know, but, but again, if you put it on the website, it's not live, but still there. So do you need a motion for that? Or you want to...
Motion to send it on to...
I'll make a motion, we send it to the voting session.
Second.
Motion and a second to send item C to the voting session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding bids received for a temporary office building.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As council's aware, the main office and administration office is located at 3,000 Northwest Wood, was included in the sale of city cable to telecommunications management. We take approximately 2,600 payments per month at the drive-through. We take 5,000 mail payments and 4,200 walk-in customers per month at that location. I think it's essential that we continue to provide a drive-through and drop box for our customers. We advertised in the newspaper, sent out for bids to four different companies. We've received two bids back. I believe that was included in your packet. This was an unbudgeted item. We discussed this at the advisory board. They recommend taking the low bid. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Mr. Bachman, can the employees temporarily move into the office without, without the trailer, basically? That's what I'm trying to say. Do we have enough room for that?
What office?
The one behind where you were. The warehouse.
There it, that's, that, that's all sold with city cable.
Okay.
No, I think she meant across the street. We keep your trucks.
Sold to warehouse.
Oh, in the electric distribution building? Yeah. There's actually three vacant offices in there.
Is that enough?
That's enough.
It's enough?
It is not enough.
It's not enough?
No.
Okay.
We, we have 14, there's 14 personnel that would go with this. We have all the customer service reps, the front office manager, collection agent, accounting, front office manager, one of the girls that actually helps the front on meter reading and kind of like the assistant to the office manager, and then all of the, myself, secretary.
Can we move any of the operations here temporarily?
You're in charge.
I'm just trying to save money.
There's no drop, there's no drive-through here.
I know.
There's problems with this building.
I know. Okay.
There's parking problems with this building.
That's true.
At this point, all the offices down here are filled up with the volunteer center and RSVP and downtown office, and I think the main part is the drive-through. 2,600 drive-throughs is a lot. Bill, you and I had discussed this, and the purchase of the building is $129,000, and I actually talked to somebody in the banking business, and they said that this is probably similar to what some of the banks have done here in the past, and you had made the comment to me that after we're through with it, whether it's six months or a year, that we would have the option to sell that back, I don't know, to the same company, or how would that work?
Well, we actually put that in the bid. We didn't get anyone that actually said after our, you know, we bought it, we used it, that sell it back, and this would be the value, but most of the ones I had talked to had said that's typically what happens. We sell it, we'll buy it back at a lesser cost. So we get money back, and, you know, it's not like, unlike what Sterling Bank did here in town, they had temporary facilities that operated as a bank. The bank got built, the facilities got moved, they went somewhere, and that's what, that's what I would recommend.
What's the timeframe on this, to get it done?
It takes two months to, to get the building. I figure another month to make it operational. We have to bring all of our network in, all the phones in, communications in, ADA ramp, drive-through, and if it's not here, we would have to do the same thing somewhere. We gotta, we gotta make it work somewhere.
But they're going to allow us to stay in that one building until this is done?
Yes.
Or do we have to get out?
We, no, as part of the sale, we had nine months from the close date.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to add also, at the board meeting, you know, we discussed how convenient and familiar that area would be to all the people paying their bills. It's just right across the street.
Right.
It would be very convenient for them to just continue going to basically the same place.
What I didn't realize is that we could possibly get our money back for that building. That's a plus.
Yeah.
Do we have... Do we have any kind of estimate or percentage of, I'm sure you don't, but ballpark maybe?
Well, I'll just based upon one of the bids I got, a used building was two-thirds the cost of a new building. Now, granted, some of this was a delivery and setup and the ramps to make it accessible, so you're not going to get the full price back, but you would get a lot of it back.
Anyone else?
Are there not any decent, are there not any decent used buildings out there or do they not offer the, the two-thirds surprise, that would be $30,000?
Well, the, the one problem I had with the one used, it was on their lot for a week and I said this was a bidded item, we'll have to go out for a bid and they said it won't be here in a week, so.
Can you tell everyone what the lowest bid is?
$129,367. $367.
And how much?
Came out of St. Charles, Missouri.
And how much do you expect to get back out of it?
I'd say approximately $80,000.
Okay. That's more than I thought that you would.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let's name that company out of St. Charles. Tyson Onsite.
Okay, I'm familiar with him.
They're good.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bach.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we move this to the voting session.
Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second to move item D to the voting session next, next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will review a petition for the creation of Green Forest Community Improvement District, which consists of 10.52 acres of property and is located at the junction of Highway 67 and PP Highway. The applicant is Mid-South Investments, Inc.
I think Randy Parsons is here or somebody from Armstrong and Teasdale to address this?
I'm here, but not necessarily to address it.
Okay.
Transition.
Okay. This, I guess this is similar to the CID that we're doing in South Papa Bluff, so, for Bob Sutton.
Okay.
Just different piece of property.
I actually got contacted by a citizen that lives over there and he told me that there, there's a water problem and are you aware, are you aware of the, the water issue in that, in that particular area?
Water drainage, drinking water.
Water drainage.
Water drainage.
Water drainage. Haven't been told of any kind of a problem yet, but we're still early on in the process.
Okay, someone told me about this prior to it being put on the agenda, so maybe, maybe we need to talk about it at some point, but just so you're aware of it before you get into this.
Well, I-
And I think it would be a good thing.
All issues will certainly be addressed through engineering, I'm sure.
Right.
I honestly, I'm not aware of any water problem, but I'd be happy to address any of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Any questions?
There's not going to be a truck stop there, David. Not in the immediate future.
I was talking to that, David.
Thank you, Randy.
Entertained, entertain a motion or a take, I'm sorry, I'm still, I'll make the motion, we move this on to the voting session to be held tonight.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to move this on to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor Protem Russian.
Item F, city council review a change in order one, the TRC entrance road project. Is there anybody here to address that?
Somebody from Smith and Company is here to address that, I think Billy Cobb is.
Billy Cobb, Smith Company, 901 Vine Street. I think this was included in your packet, hopefully, that letter to Mark and all the documents that were attached to it, but basically on the TRC entrance road project, we have a change order, there's, none of the costs are associated with the city or the city's general revenues and that's kind of what's explained in this letter. Basically, the biggest item, 50, almost 50% of the cost is Clark Allen and the Parks Department Board had voted on, early on, right after, right around the time we were bidding this project. The TDD included a five-foot walk and the park board wanted to widen that to eight-foot wide walk to kind of connect the campus with the bike trail and we already have the bike trail that's under construction on Shelby. So, that's basically 50% of the cost. There are some other items there that, one of the items is coordinating the two projects, kind of, we took some money out of the Shelby Road project with Hessling and moved it into this project because of the, the TRC entrance roads is slightly behind, if you've been by there, the walk trail is pretty much done where the entrance roads go, but the entrance road isn't up to grade yet. So, so we didn't put in a walk that we in turn turned around and had to tear back out, we, we just basically moved it to this contract, so it's a contract deduction on, on the Shelby Road portion and added it to this portion. There's a few other odd and end things there, I'd be happy to continue to go over all of them if there's, or if there's questions or-
Any additional questions for Mr. Cobb? Thank you very much. Move a motion?
I'll make a motion, we move this to the voting, the voting session tonight.
Yes, and a second?
Second.
And a second, move item B off the voting session, to sit tonight.
Is that on voting session thing, tonight?
Oh, no, no, not TRC.
That's actually for next council meeting.
Yeah, it is the next council meeting.
Stand, then for the next voting session.
Yeah.
They said for the, for the-
Be all in favor.
Yeah, all in favor for the next voting session.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay. Item G, the city council will review a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one for construction inspection services between the city of Papa Bluff and Smith and Company engineers relative to the airport slurry seal improvement project. Hello.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for hearing me tonight. This, this item that we're doing for slurry seal is for the inspection to make sure everybody does the right thing and we recommend that Smith and Company to do that project for us.
They've done the design work, is that correct?
Yes, they did the design work last year.
And this is just for the construction inspection phase?
To make sure everything is done like what's supposed to be done.
As they designed it.
Yes, after they designed it.
They start out with the work and then this is just the finishing product?
Yes, yes.
It's gonna happen this summer?
Yes, that's why we're voting it tonight, we're hoping we can start maybe middle of June.
Any further questions?
Make a motion to vote, move it to the voting session this evening.
Second.
Motion and a second to move this to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I've got two more items.
Oh, okay. Oh, you do. Item H, the city council will review bids received and awarded, awarding of the project relative to the airport slurry seal improvements project.
This is a thing that we do about every five years at the airport, it's like a slurry seal and restriping of our runway and taxiway. We had one bid this time and the bid was 372,000 and 502. And we, we have checked out the places that they have done this before and they've done a good job, so we recommend we, you guys accept this for us.
Have they worked for us before?
No, they have not, no, but I've been to some airports that they have done this job, they've done a really good job.
And the bulk of this is grant money, is it 90-10, 95?
90-10, 95, 5 and 90-10, yes.
This will be for the next session.
Like to vote that tonight too, if we can.
It's not on the agenda for tonight, I don't think, oh, yes, it is.
I make a motion that we take item H to the voting session tonight.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to move item H to the voting session tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The city council will review amendment number one to a state block grant agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the design and construct pavement maintenance agreement for the Papa Bluff Municipal Airport.
What this item is, is just get paid for this projects that we're doing for MoDOT Aviation and we just need, need council's approval on that.
Okay.
Does that need to be voted on tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion that we move this to the voting session tonight.
A second.
Motion and a second to move item I to the voting session to be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item J, the city council will discuss options available relative to the purchase of new fire trucks for the Papa Bluff Fire Department.
Chief Stucker's here to address this, I'm gonna address it just for a few minutes here. At the last meeting, we had asked to buy two used fire trucks and there was concern about buying used fire trucks. You had asked us to go back and look at lease purchasing. What Chief Stucker's come up with is a ongoing program that would basically get us three new fire trucks every 10 years. The cost is around $190,000 a year that would have to come out of capital budget. After our bond payment in capital, there's approximately a million dollars left for all the other departments. That sounds like a lot of money, but when you figure in street paving and street construction and I know there's been interest in sidewalks and more streets paved, all that money has to be divided up, so I guess it's whether you all want to commit to this plan or look at an alternate plan. I'll just, I'll let Chief Stucker take it from here and address this.
Madam Mayor, members of council, you should have received this evening, a program on lease purchasing, we've contacted five of the vendors in our area that sells fire apparatus and they've given us, three of them has gotten back with us on numbers so far and we're in a 1.5 to 1.7 cost range for three trucks. This program allows, if you all approve this, to run apparatuses, frontline trucks from one to 10 years, at 10 years they go to reserve for the next 10 years, then after that they are taken out of inventory. The condition that they're in at the end of 20 years should give us ability to sell them and, and receive a little bit of money out of them. As it stands right now, our reserve apparatus are 30 and 40 years old. We're not going to get anything out of them, we're having a hard time finding parts to maintain them. And our frontline trucks are getting, two of them are over the age of 15 and the newest one is eight years old. So, we can, we've got the grant out still yet for an area truck, we haven't heard anything, we still, we haven't heard a denial letter yet on it either, so there is a possibility we could still hit that on a grant, but we won't know that for probably several months. This is a good program if the city can handle the paper. We could bounce it back down to two and see if, what happens with the grant and then maybe try to pick up another truck in another year or two, whatever options you all want us to try to go for, we need to do. We've also got to contact the company in Alabama and let them know where we stand on the, on the two trucks we have down there.
Okay.
And I am, I mean, I am concerned about $190,000 a year for that many years, it's, I think it's something we really need to take a close look at. Our problem is on, when you do new fire trucks, you're talking, what, a year and a half by the time you bid them out, spec them, bid them out and have them delivered.
Usually the lead time is, is anywhere from six months to 15 months because they're going to have to build them, they build each one at a time. We did talk to one manufacturing company, they have three in the production line right now that's due to come out in, in June. We've been looking through the specifications on those trucks, there's nothing in there that concerns us, everything is, is something that will work well with the city and it is one of the, the biggest manufacturers of fire trucks in, in the country.
And the problem we run into there is, we'd still need to bid the fire trucks, so in the bidding process, by the time we get through bids, I'm not sure they would still be available.
The trucks that you were originally trying to bid out, you were trying to get, they wouldn't be available, is that what you're saying?
The, the three trucks they have in production right now?
Mm-hmm.
No one has got a contract on them, but that can change any day. This would just be a timing issue if everything works out.
He has three companies here, is that not considered a bid?
What was the question?
You're looking at three different companies, he was wanting to know if that was considered a bid, I mean, we have to go out, we'd have to go out for formal bids.
We've contacted five companies to give us preliminary numbers of what, what this project would cost, three of them has contacted us back and give us a number, the other two are still working on that, but that's still, they still has to be bid out, we'll have to put specifications out, Ms. Kirby can tell us how many days that has to be advertised and then go through the bid process and award the bids.
And I'm still concerned about that much of a commitment. I know, I would love to see three new fire trucks every 10 years and get them on a rotating basis.
Our, our police department gets new vehicles every year, don't they? And I know that it's not the same as a fire truck, but I understand that there's tremendous issues with being able to keep those trucks maintained and do you feel that the older trucks are gonna, are gonna do what you need them to do?
You know-
That's a concern to me because if we waste money on that-
It's a big concern for us, if we, anything that we do to the older trucks, especially the ones that are 30, 40 years old, any money to be put into them, we're not going to get anything out of it. One of the trucks has got a transmission, it's a weak transmission, to have that transmission rebuilt, it's been estimated to be between $7,000 and $10,000. We're gonna get maybe a couple thousand dollars out of the truck. A few years ago, we got rid of our 72 snorkel, it's a specialized truck, we got $4,000 for it and it was in remarkable condition. These trucks right here have been, have been frontline trucks for several years over the department, for the majority of the time here, they have served as frontline trucks off and on. Anytime that we have a major problem with one of our frontline trucks, we pull these back into service. So, when we contact manufacturers or contact parts people and they, they tell us that availability of parts is almost non-existent on a lot of them, it's why my hair's gray.
What's the newest truck we have now?
The newest truck we have right now is a 2006, we got it in late 2005.
And how's its functionality been?
It, we're starting to see some issues with it. On any of the new trucks that are coming down the market now with the computers that they have in there and the technology that's based into these trucks, we won't get the longevity out of them as we have the older trucks.
And all the newer trucks are going to have this solid-state circuitry type?
Yes.
Yes. Now, I'm, I'm a little new, what, how is the, what's the condition of the county trucks? I mean, if you're familiar with that, what ages are their trucks?
I'm not real sure I can find out for you.
I can find that.
Bob will, will bid out a truck every so many years, he bumps one of them back down and puts a new one in the service.
He just bought a new one, but it's not the, you were explaining they, a county truck is a lot less money than a-
Yes, so they, they get a, a commercial chassis, a freightliner, they get freightliners, they can get a freightliner or a, or international, our streets, maneuver around our streets is a figure.
Turn radius, yes.
Engine 12 on the south end is an international chassis, four-door chassis, we have dropped the wheels off trying to maneuver around the south end-
Sure.
-on it more than once.
Yes.
The trucks we're looking at will be what they call a custom- The trucks we're looking at will be what they call a custom chassis. The steer wheels will be behind the front seats.
Okay.
And it'll make those wages a lot.
In your opinion, from what you're seeing, knowing budget issues, what would you think the best route for us to go for? Your opinion, so we can take that under consideration?
You know, not sure what the budget issue is. The best thing for the department would be to start this program. Now, we could, we could do two new trucks and replace the latter truck in the truck at station three, and, but engine seven on the north end is eight years old now, and by the time you go through that process, it's gonna be good enough for about fifteen years.
So, possibly trying to go with two engines instead of three?
Well, one of them will be a ladder truck.
Yes.
And that's, that's the, that's the big cost.
Yeah, two engines, one ladder, okay.
What's the warranty on them trucks?
It varies from manufacturer to manufacturer. You know, different, different components will, the truck has everything out to ten years, depending on what it is. Some of it's five, some of it's ten.
And would we have people, or would we have to go have them trained, have to work on these trucks for?
We will have to, you know, that will be included in a deal for training for the mechanic.
Because of the middle electronics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's gonna be more feasible to get two this year and look at it, instead of going to the ten years or whatever.
It's, it's one direction the council wants us to go after and look at.
Are you?
Concerned, Mark, is?
We have three hundred and fifty thousand budgeted this year.
Three thirty-six.
Can you speak into the mic because they can't hear you?
When would the first, I know you and I have talked about this, when would the first lease payment be due? Next year? Next budget year?
One year after the acceptance of the truck. So if we, if we, if one of these trucks that's in production, if that worked and we could get them this year, the next, first payment would be in two thousand and fifteen. If we take delivery in two thousand and fifteen, the first payment would be two thousand and sixteen.
And we still have a grant outstanding?
We still have a grant that we haven't heard. We haven't heard a denial letter or anything like that yet either.
It was three hundred and something, it wasn't, I'm not sure.
It was for a ladder truck, so it's gonna be upwards, you know, it, what, you know, about six hundred.
Okay. So if we did two trucks, excuse me.
I know, that's fine.
What would we be looking at on the lease payment, do you know?
I can, I can go back and run the numbers. They've got some, they've got some applications out there that I can go to and run numbers. I'll have to get with these companies and say, we're gonna look at two trucks instead of three. What will the numbers be on the cost? Because there, as you add more trucks to it, they're giving you a better deal.
Then what's the condition of the ladder truck that we have now?
The condition of the ladder truck right now is it's seventeen years old. We're having more and more problems with it. Anything, any fire apparatus that goes over ten years old, we start having a lot of issues with.
So how would it be if we did the two fire trucks, and then we'd hold on the ladder and see if the grant came in to try to help get the ladder? I mean, that's an option we have.
Our ladder truck is, it's housed at station one, which covers downtown and the area. That is our busiest station. That truck we've got in ninety-seven, and it pumps it probably ninety-five percent of our structure fires. So it, it's the truck that probably gets the most use.
You're saying if you could just get two trucks, you'd like to have a ladder and a pump?
Yeah.
Well, if, if you.
But we can, we can hold off, we can do two, two pumpers and everything, hold off on the ladder. That gives us, that puts another pumper back in reserve that when we have to take the ladder truck out, we're not going to a forty-one-year-old truck. And then see what we do on the grant, and maybe come back next year or the year, and then look at picking up that truck.
I mean, we can't predict a great situation, but that would be the best route to go.
We've been waiting you like six months for the grant.
Yeah, there was a delay with the shutdown in the government and everything. I know that some of the first rounds of awards have been made. We have, you know, the main thing right now is we haven't received an I'm sorry letter, so we're still in the running. And we've got three grants standing out there right now, one for air packs, one for loose equipment, and one for the aerial truck. So far, we haven't heard a I'm sorry on anything, so that's, that's a positive note.
Chief Stucker, with the two trucks that you proposed are brought to us at the last meeting, it was in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eight, would that be, would that get us through until we had time to look at the budget and try to make some adjustments and stuff to get the lease purchase thing going? Have those two good quality trucks?
Our, our main problem is, we've got a couple items we need to take care of on the ladder truck and engine seven. We need to down them trucks. Some of them trucks are gonna be down for multiple days to do that. When we do that, we go back to a nineteen forty-one, nineteen seventy-three truck, forty-one years of age, which makes things real costly for us.
Chief Stucker, would it be a little easier on your maintenance for the trucks if perhaps you, the maintenance person had more help? Say you moved the trucks to the motor pool and let more than one maintenance person work on your trucks, so that they were able to keep them up in addition to what Councilman DeGara said? Get through with the, the two trucks, maybe, and then look at the budget and see if we could afford the lease to purchase at the next, the next time? Is that something that would maybe help your situation a little bit?
Anything would be beneficial. If we do that, we need additional money and training so we can get our mechanic back out to some more of the emergency vehicle technician classes, and whoever is working down there would need to do the same thing, so we'd have a couple people.
Because what I'm hearing is maintenance, no parts, they won't, it's not working, so it sounds to me like you have a maintenance issue, too, on top of.
When we get trucks this age, it is tough to keep them going.
Maybe that's something, you know, that you could look at.
Ralph and I talked today about training for the mechanic. I mean, it's money we don't have budget, we'd have to look at something, but emergency vehicle training, would you say five weeks? Not all at once, but.
There are several different components. They have, they have training for pumps, aerial, electronics, braking, every aspect of the truck, they have, they have training programs for. And so if you, the nearest one we've found in the past has been like Minnesota or up north, one of the, one of the plants, so it, TRCC has been talking about, you know, in their public safety program out there, starting a, a training program out there for emergency vehicle technicians, but that's probably gonna be, you know, down the road a little bit. But we've partnered with three of our colleges real well with the fire program, and anything they could do like that would be beneficial, but now we're looking off a few years.
No, I would really like to get that training for that mechanic. I think that'd be really beneficial to us.
And the thing about that, when we send him out like that, usually that's a minimum of a week he's gone, everything. Generally, whenever he takes off, we usually have everything go out the window.
Ralph did an excellent job. Thank you for sharing all this information. And I'd like for Ralph to get a lease purchase on two new pumper trucks, bring it back to the next meeting if he could, if he has time, and we make a decision then. I know it's a budget issue, but that's what I'd like to see done.
Second, they're talking about these trucks are gonna be off the assembly line in June, that's awful quick.
They, they, those trucks, each manufacturer does what they call a stock unit that they send out to their sales divisions. And we just happened to catch three of them that hasn't been asked for or contracted on that happens to be in that system. We've never seen anything like that before, and one of the guys that we're dealing with called and said that they had them in the production schedule, he didn't know when, and when he called me back, he said they're actually, they're actually in production, so. But we can get you cost numbers on two, two pumpers.
Is that what you'd want, two pumpers or?
We can do two pumpers and hold off on aerial and see what happens with the grant, but we can get you some more defined numbers by the next council meeting.
The only thing I worry about on that, the two that we've, that you brought to us before, we've budgeted for those, and they came in under budget, two thousand and seven and eight.
Two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine.
Will they still be available? Would we put this off any longer?
I, I, I need to.
And then the budget says we can't get anything done on the purchase, then we're out, lost a good purchase of two trucks.
I guess that was, that was three hundred and something thousand dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah, three hundred and thirty-six thousand.
And that's, and that's a tall purchase.
We have three hundred and thirty-six thousand, why is the one-eighty to make the lease payments an issue?
Because it's gonna be successive years, yeah.
Annually, they only budgeted for it for one year.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Now, I did talk to one of the local banks today that came in. Most of these lease numbers that they're giving, this is based on three-point-five percent interest. One of the local banks come by today and everything, said they've been running figures for us also, and he said, what he's been told from his upper personnel is that they can do it for two-point-five. So that will bring those numbers down. The option, there's also an option of using the money we have now to pay down on these trucks like that, that would reduce that, that number down also. And we can, we'll run numbers on all those options.
Well, what, you know, the one issue is, you know, either we're going halfway in the woods or halfway out of the woods, you know, we're right in the middle, and there's two very good choices to look at. And of course, one of them's gonna have, require more money down the road. And the bad thing is, we just, when we buy used, like when the used trucks we're gonna be getting, is there a thirty-day, ninety-day warranty on those, or, you know, what I'm saying?
I'll have to check with the company. There is a warranty they have on there, but I'm not sure.
And there's, are they electronic?
Yeah.
And they're electronic?
Anything that we get today is gonna have electronics on there that, that's gonna be an issue down the road.
And so, you know, and then the other problem we have is, if, if the boards on those, the electronic boards on those engines, if they have a lifetime of, you know, seven, eight years, then we're now right at that apron. It's just, it makes it really difficult. One way you, one way we can save money, we may have hardship down the road. The other way, we're gonna spend money, we're gonna have a low functional fleet.
And then you may end up having to do it again.
Yeah.
If we can't, if we don't have a functional fleet. So you might end up having to spend money again anyways.
We're just trying to look at a, a program that will, that will eliminate that little problem down the road.
The item of the best resistance, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Has anyone got a motion for me?
I would bring back.
Pardon me? Yeah, I'll make a motion and bring back numbers on two new pumper trucks at the next council meeting.
For this issue, do you want it to be voted on as well in the next council meeting?
Yes.
Well, and the one question I have is, Mark, is, is based on budget, you know, if we're looking at two engines, and we got, get those numbers on that, but if we're looking at two engines and possible grant on the, on the ladder, is that something we can float over ten years?
I think so. We do rotate police cars every year. We spend a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty thousand a year. Several years that money comes out of Crime Reduction Fund, because there's not money in capital for all of them. Crime Reduction Fund can't be used for the fire department, just police department, so we're lucky to have that. Two, I think it's very feasible. Three, I might be, might feel more comfortable a few more down, years down the road, so.
Well, we'll look at the numbers next meeting and hopefully we can get a consensus for vote, because what Ed says is, is a good point. And then what concerns me, though, is that the electronic engines, if the boards go bad, then that's a lot of money involved, plus you have to have someone skilled to train and change it. And we might go ahead and ask the chief, too, if he can get, if he can find out on some of the, if he can talk to the people and ask them on the history of some of the repairs on these electronic engines, what they run. If we can kind of get an idea of that, that helps us understand whether we're gonna go more used or more new. So if he can do that, that would be good.
So, do we have a motion to, so we have a motion to move this to the voting session next meeting, but with more information about what it would cost to do lease a purchase on two trucks?
Two trucks, yes.
Okay. Who, did you second that?
I will second that.
Okay. So motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item K, the city council will review applications received for city boards. I've had about four different people contacting me, asking when, when the time is up for when they can send their applications in. I felt like maybe there's a few more people out there that wanted to apply. I think we should, in my opinion, I think we should extend it maybe another, maybe another week or so, let people get their apps in. It's up to you all. But I don't want to leave anyone out who wants to apply.
No, none of the boards are, are positions termed out, or the people get rotated, or what's the deal with that? I'm not really clear on all the boards, how they.
What we have down on there are the ones that are, they're not termed out.
Okay.
So, and we've had people apply for all the boards but one, Fair Housing, and we always have trouble getting people for that board.
And do we have, we have limits on boards, so we have, we have more applicants than we have seats available, correct?
Right.
So in a situation like that, either we're gonna leave people on boards, or leave some on and take some off? Is that how it's done?
Well, the ones that are on here aren't termed out yet, so.
Okay, so they're not termed out?
That's right.
Okay. So then if there's, if there's no vacancies, then that board doesn't advance to new members, correct?
Well, people, we can have citizens apply for it, but usually if they've got an incumbent that's on there and they reapply, they usually get reappointed. But we run this for ten days, three different times in the newspaper, and we had to have them in by May the twelfth, so.
There'll be several new ones, I think, because Councilman Johnson was on several boards.
Right. Right.
But we, the code says we, this has to be done by the first meeting in June, because that's when the new board. So.
Probably under our time constraints, we're probably at the limit right now as far as we could.
Yeah, I think so.
So just go on with the applications that we have, then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to go with the applications at hand for the new board applications.
Sorry.
Bring the.
Put item K to the voting session next.
Yes, item K to the voting session next meeting.
Sorry.
Okay. Motion and a second to move item K to the voting session next meeting, and just leave the applications as is. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Action required, acquired items. Bill number seventy-six eighty-eight. The city council will take action on an ordinance approving a request to operate a building materials business in a C-two general commercial district. The applicant is Simo Ready-Max, PO Box twenty-four-five, Cape Girardeau, Missouri, for property located at thirty-one twenty-three Cravens Road.
Move for first reading of seven-six-eight-eight.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit for the operation of a building materials business at three-one-two-three Cravens Road, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for second reading.
Second.
A motion and a second for second reading of bill number seventy-eight, seventy-six eighty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit for the operation of a building materials business at three-one-two-three Cravens Road, Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption of bill number seventy-six eighty-eight.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-six eighty-eight. Roll call.
Councilman DeGara.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshire.
Yes.
Yes.
Six yes votes.
Bill number, uh, motion passes, or, I'm sorry, bill number seventy-six eighty-eight passes. Bill number seventy-six eighty-nine, the city council will take action on an ordinance amending the lease agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and Wheatley Historic Preservation Association, Inc., for property located at nine fifteen Garfield Street.
Move for first reading of bill number seventy-six eighty-nine.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number seventy-six eighty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance amending a lease agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and Wheatley Historic Preservation Association, Inc., relative to the use of property owned by the city known as Wheatley School for use as a museum and community center.
Move for second reading of seven-six-eight-nine.
Second.
A motion and a second for a second reading of bill number seventy-six eighty-nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance amending a lease agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and Wheatley Historic Preservation Association, Inc., relative to the use of property owned by the city known as Wheatley School for use as a museum and community center.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-six eighty-nine. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill number seventy-six ninety, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one for construction inspection services between the city of Papa Bluff and Smith &amp; Company engineers relative to the airport slurry seal improvements project.
Move for first reading of bill number seventy-six ninety.
Second.
Motion for a first, motion and a second for first reading of bill number seventy-six ninety. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute supplemental agreement number one with S.H. Smith &amp; Company, Inc., relative to the airport slurry seal project number thirteen dash seven-five A dash one.
Move for second reading of seventy-six ninety.
Second.
Motion and a second for a second reading of bill number seventy-six ninety. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute supplemental agreement number one with S.H. Smith &amp; Company, Inc., relative to the airport slurry seal project number thirteen dash seven-five A dash one.
Move for adoption, seventy-six ninety.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-six ninety. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Bill number seventy-six ninety-one, the city council will take action on an ordinance awarding a bid on the airport slurry seal improvements project.
I make a motion, we move, excuse me, for seven-six-nine-one. We read it first time.
Okay. Motion and a second for first reading of bill number seventy-six ninety-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid for improvements to the runway and taxway at the Papa Bluff Municipal Airport.
Move for second reading, bill number seventy-six ninety-one.
Second.
Motion and a second for second reading of bill number seventy-six ninety-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance accepting a bid for improvements to the runway and taxway at the Papa Bluff Municipal Airport.
I make a motion, move for adoption.
Second.
Seven-six-nine-one.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-six ninety-one. Any comments or questions?
I have a comment. If anybody was out there Saturday, this was the biggest crowd they had ever, and that's how important the, keeping this runway is. Something I didn't realize, Mr. Smith had told me, and I know we're projecting forward, is Menards has to land airplane now at Cape Girardeau and drive over here. So, I really want to impress that we need to do whatever we can to extend that runway. I know we've purchased property recently and everything, but we want to pursue all options still that, that will help the development of our area. That's the only comment I have.
Thank you. So, roll call.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill number seventy-six ninety-two, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute amendment number one to the state block grant agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the design and construct pavement maintenance funds for the Papa Bluff, Missouri Airport Improvements Program, project number thirteen dash zero-seven-five A dash one.
Move for first reading of bill number seventy-six ninety-two.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading of bill number seventy-six ninety-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an amendment to the state block grant agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the design and construct pavement maintenance funds for the Papa Bluff Municipal Airport Improvement Program, project number one-three dash zero-seven-five A dash one.
I make a motion, we read a second for seven-six-nine, seven-six ninety-two.
Second.
A motion and a second for second reading of bill number seventy-six ninety-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute an amendment to the state block grant agreement between the city of Papa Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the design and construct pavement maintenance funds for the Papa Bluff Municipal Airport Improvement Program, project number one-three dash zero-seven-five A dash one.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventy-six ninety-two. Do we have any questions? Roll call.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes. No roll call.
Resolution number seventeen ninety-one, the city council will take action on a resolution appointing a search committee relative to the city manager's position.
I make a motion for the reading of resolution number one-seven-nine-one.
Second.
Motion and a second for the reading of resolution number one-seven-nine-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
A resolution appointing an advisory search committee relative to the position of city manager for the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri.
Move for adoption.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Motion and a second for adoption of bill number seventeen ninety-one. Any comments or questions? Councilman Branham, you weren't here. Ms. Abshir would like to be on the committee. She was another person, and I think everyone, everyone here had a consensus that that was okay.
I think it's fantastic. She has thirty years' experience in that, and I think if she ever made that decision, we watched.
Okay. All right. So, we had a motion and a second for adoption of resolution number seventeen ninety-one. Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Branham.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Russian.
Yes.
And Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution number seventeen ninety-two, the city council will take action on a resolution adopting a policy to upload council meeting videos when available to the city's website.
Move for reading of resolution number one-seven-nine-two.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second for reading of, of resolution number one-seven-nine-two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, adopting a policy to make videotapes of city council meetings available online.
Move for adoption of resolution number seventeen ninety-two.
Second.